Hold order in the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Wednesday, July the 5th. You would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing. We led in prayer this evening by Father Todd Goodson, pastor of Our Lady of Greenwood Catholic Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the prayer this evening, I'd like to offer a prayer written by Bishop John Carroll. It's a prayer that he offered for the inauguration of George Washington when he was made president of our country. And it's adaptable for this type of meeting as well. Oh, my name is Eternal God. You have revealed your glories to all nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through your authority, through you authorities rightly administered, laws are enacted and judgment is decreed. Assist with your Spirit of council and forward to the President of our United States that his administration may be conducted in righteousness, be eminently useful to your people over whom he presides. May he encourage due respect for virtue and religion. May he execute the laws with justice and mercy. May he seek to restrain crime, vice and immorality. Let the light of your divine wisdom direct that deliberations of Congress shine forth in all the proceedings of laws framed for unruly government. May they seek to preserve peace, promote national happiness and continue to bring us the blessings of liberty and equality. We pray for the governor of our state, for the members of the legislature, for judges, elected officials, and especially this city council that needs the evening, all of those who are entrusted to guard our political welfare. May they be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. We likewise commend to your unbounded mercy, all citizens of the United States, that we may be blessed in the knowledge and sanctified in the observance of your holy law. May we be preserved in union and that peace which the world cannot give. And after enjoying the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We pray to you who are Lord and God forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. May we see it. Roll call. Present. Here.
Here. I am here.
He's virtual.
Rexy.
Present.
Milton.
Here.
Here. We do have a quorum. Just note, Mr. Hopper is here virtually this evening. All of you should receive copies of the minutes for our last regular meeting of June the 19th. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lexi. Second. Second. Second by Mr. Bates. Any additions, deletions or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes.
Bates.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Rexy.
Hi.
Milton.
Hi.
Hi.
Minister, approve the vote of eight to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
Yeah, I didn't send any monthly report. It's available on SharePoint.
Right. Controller?
Nothing for me.
Any other committee or board reports? All right, this is an opportunity to set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute time limit per person and a 20-minute time limit per topic. Or if you're online, please speak up. All right. Hearing none, then ordinances and resolutions, notice of intent to consider. Ordinance number 2323.
An ordinance and an official zoning map adopted by reference, unified development ordinance number 2029, proposed rezoning approximately 2.52 acres located at 3186 and 3194 West Smith Valley Road. Holbrook property sponsored by Lexi.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lexi. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Anybody wish to talk to us about this?
My name is John Holbrook. My wife and I reside at 3194 West Smith Valley Road. We've lived there for 50 years. We own the property. Two acres, 3194 West Smith Valley Road, for 21-plus years. When we purchased the property, it was zoned two separate ways. Part R2 and part C2. And I got some maps here that I'm applying to sell. September of 2022, my wife and I purchased a home on 3186 West Smith Valley Road, which was a half acre that joined our property. And we bought that to tear it down and give it better curb feel, give us more road frontage with our property. Toward the house down and get it shovel ready so we can try to market it among our two acres. We now own two and a half acres. Two and a half acres is a corner lot in the nice home in the city of Greenwood. We are asking for a CM commercial zoning so it will help promote property for sale. The C2 and R2 zoning was taken away from our property when they did a comprehensive study back in, I think it was 2002. We're asking for just commercial zoning so it will help us promote a property for sale. C2 and R2 zoning. I already told you that it was taken away, but they did the comprehensive study. The future land use map shows property for commercial and use. This property is also designated for marketplace shopping center use. By promoting property for commercial, it will help retail growth and property values mostly. There's no proposed development to the property at this time. I've been asked several times why by developers, why the commercial zoning wasn't there. Following this information regarding our property, property has three acres for the road frontage on Smith Valley Road. Two and a half acres located on Hart Corner. There's commercial business on three sides of our property. In the north, it's Menards. The east, it's CBS and Circle K. To the south, the Jagger Office Building, School Prep Strips Inn, Home Depot and Walmart. All the city utilities are on the property. By mid-July, the roundabout at Monex Road and Smith Valley Road will be finished and along with three feet of ramps from I-69. I-69 and Smith Valley Road exchange the schedule for completion by the end of this year. Smith Valley Road is in the works to be widened. Roundabout is in the works for Smith Valley Road, Reston Road, may take part of our property. Indot will be making improvements at State Road 135 and Smith Valley Road. Seven and a half million dollars in earmark for that project. By granting us a CM zoning, it will help us promote property for sale and one less hurdle for any developers that may show interest in our property.
Any questions for Mr. Holbrook? Babe, do you have something you want to say?
So as you probably saw in our memorandum, staff was also supportive of this zone map change in alliance with our comprehensive plan which designates this as commercial. John worked with us early on. We recommended that he reached out to his neighbors on the east side. He did talk with his neighbors. They are not opposed of this zone map change on the east. They actually are also willing to settle, but my understanding is that they didn't want to go through the paperwork of a zone map change. They would rather have a developer come in to do the zone map change off their behalf. At least that's what it appeared to me. Advisory Plan Commission did see this at our last meeting. It was a favorable motion for this recommendation to common council. Do you have any other questions regarding this petition having help?
I have a question for Mr. Holbrook. What do you envision? What would you like to see go in here?
Well, actually, I'd like to see some high-end condominiums going and there was retail underneath it. It's an entry into Greenwood. It all looks nice to be in there. As I mentioned in my earlier comments about developers asking me why our property wasn't zoned commercial, we had three developers at the table promoting the property for sale along with Menards, seven and a half acres, which was a total of 17 acres. And Buckingham and Thompson Thrift both wanted to put market rate apartments in there. And they tell us all, all the property owners, that the dirt was too expensive. And I said, yeah, it is for market rate apartments. We've got enough of it. We don't need any more of that. I'd like to see some nice retail, custom shops, some nice condos.
All right. Any questions from the council or discussion in the council?
I have something really quick. Was there any feedback from the neighbors on your west side?
On the west side?
Yep.
No, not that I know of. And if I were waiting, sending anything to me.
We did have a letter that was or, yeah, it was a letter that was read into the Plan Commission meeting as part of the outreach for the public. Then we did have someone via Zoom. They were in the northwest corner, so across the road, that did ask. And most of the concerns were about traffic in that area. I do think that some of that traffic will be alleviated once the proposed roundabout and widening of Smith Valley is done. But it was mostly noise and traffic related from the west side.
So they were against it?
They spoke out at the, one person who was in at the Advisory Plan Commission hearing. John handled the rebuttal. They were given a chance to speak after John provided his rebuttal about the road improvements. And they did not, they did not take a chance to respond to that. So I, I don't know if that meant they were satisfied or if they just had nothing further to add.
Mr. Nelson, do you have any idea how much property might be needed for future right-of-way in addition to what is there now?
Well, with John's site, there are some redrinks. His site is actually going to be, a lot of it's going to be taken up by the future roundabout. So on his site, I can't give you the exact number off the top of my head, but he's going to have this much more significant right-of-way being taken from that corner than the other neighbors with frillage along there. Right now, he's got a hard corner there, but that's supposed to be a roundabout. On like a arterial road, we request 60 feet half right-of-way on each side, so 120 feet total. I would have to review what Indot and the county's plans are for this hearing with the roundabout and which way they're shifting it. Sometimes depending on where buildings are at an intersection, they'll shift it more in one direction or the other to help with the cost of the project.
Okay, and if it's approximately 60 foot, then how far east do you think that 60 would run in? How many, it would be, it would be the full frantage of his property or a part of it?
Yeah, it'd be, he would need to dedicate right-of-way along the full frillage for Smith Valley and eventually so will all the property along there will need to reduce the frillage or the road expansion.
So if that's in the midst of a roundabout, would it be difficult for traffic to get in and out of there? Being on a roundabout?
To his site, if we need road access, I know that there are
Out to Reston then?
There are, yeah, that it could be through Reston or it could be even off of Marlin Drive. I know on the kind of other side of these residential areas, we've been getting some inquiries about commercial on the far east side closer to Marlin Drive, which Menards would also be extending. One thing that I might look for in our review of plans is getting some type of an access road behind Smith Valley to take the traffic off of Smith Valley. Our engineer would also look at the curb cuts from any intersection. We don't like to have our curb cuts close to an intersection. And they would need to have XL decel lanes. It would end up improving it to be safer than a driveway with no XL decel lane that is currently there. But he's probably going to lose that driveway completely to be off of Reston or another area I speculate.
Any other questions? I just have a comment. I'm not really opposed to this being zoned commercial. My only issue is not knowing what's going to go in. At least two other projects over the, since I've been on the council here in the city of Greenwood have gone in over the substantial objections of the neighbors because the property was zoned and the project met all the zoning requirements, so it didn't have to come to the council. You know, Plan Commission, you know, they just approved plans and stuff. But when citizens come to us and complain or want something done and we're really, there's nothing we can do. The two particular, and Randy's not here tonight, but the Shell Station out at the Worsfell and Sheek and the most recent one, the Car Wash over there by Woolgrove. We had a lot of people really upset about that, but it was really out of the council's hands because it was already zoned and that met all the zoning requirements. So that's my hesitancy is not knowing what's going to go in. And under commercial medium, you can have gas stations, car services, extended stay hotels, as well as medical offices and retail and residential, or at least commercial residential. So there's so many things. It just concerns me a little bit to make it so open that when something does come along, if it meets the standards, then the council doesn't have a whole lot of say as to what can go in. So if citizens came to us and complained, then we would be again powerless to do anything. So I'm just a little concerned about that. And so that's my comment. Any other comments, Mr. Hopper?
And I might quickly respond to that. So we can put a commitment or a condition if there's a specific use that you're concerned about that might help you be more comfortable with the commercial zoning. Part of it, Car Wash, I believe that received a use variance. And you're correct, that is out of the council's control. You can have a use variance on any parcel of any zone. It could still be residential in zoning and get a use variance for commercial use. So in that area, there really is no, nothing that council can do in that position besides possibly belong straight at the border zone that feels big. The other is the zone map change if something's already zoned. You're correct, there are some identified uses that are allowed under those zones. We can maybe take a look at our zoning use table. Maybe some of those zones aren't appropriate or some of those uses aren't appropriate in all of the zones that we've provided. Part of that is probably also a public education thing that planning can do to make sure that when people are purchasing homes or looking for homes in Greenwood, that they're aware of what the comprehensive plan shows for their future. I think a lot of times people maybe get used to the empty farm field behind their home when, like the home that they are in, someday that might to develop. So I think some of it might be just educating the public on the proposed uses that can go into our zones. But aside from that, I'd be happy to, you know, take a look at our zone map change, zoning uses. I do think during our comprehensive plan, which we're kicking off, we do want council to be actively involved in that and have your buy-in. And part of that plan may be recommending changes to our unified development ordinance. So I encourage you guys to stay alert for comprehensive plan updates that are already coming out so that we can help make a plan that the city pretty would be comfortable with.
You know the comments or questions for the council?
I think I would be more comfortable with it if we knew a little bit more about the layout of the enhancements at Smith Valley Road and how the traffic's going to be handled there. Yeah, I think condos and the retail would be great and that's something that could be used in that area. But you've still got to find the developer that's willing to do that.
I know, I believe, Mr. Holbrook, you have spoken with your neighbors about trying to get them to join you in this rezoning. And so there's another seven acres there that's currently residential. And they've been hesitant. I'm not too sure why, but they've been hesitant. And Mr. Nelson, you know, you think this will spur them if we did this to all of them to rezone to commercial? Because I see that coming at some point.
I, I do see that coming in the future. I know for a lot of the residents there, I think part of it was not wanting to pay the filing fee for a zone map change. They would rather have a developer take on the cost of that so they didn't want to, I guess, be proactive in aligning the zone with the future land use plan. I also think there were some concerns that if they zoned to commercial, that they would lose the ability to be residential. That is not true. They can remain residential if the zoning changes. They would be a grandfather use under the commercial zone and they would not have to forfeit their home or anything like that. This was communicated to them, but they still did not want to go forward with the petition. John might be able to further speak to why they didn't want to participate.
Mr. Nelson, how much would the filing fee be for that approximately?
John might, you better remember than I do, I think it's eight hundred and fifty dollars, eight hundred, eight hundred and some dollars, sixteen dollars for the notice signs. And there are some expenses with the sailings and the daily general expenses.
Hey, your question, I've got fifteen hundred dollars of this statement right now. Okay. And if you don't have a legal description, you may have to have a surveyor, survey your property with your expense. There's eight property owners in the nine and a half acres in the block there that I gave you maps of. And I talked to all the people who are willing to sell. We have, as I mentioned, we've had three developers that take money from one of them and to no avail. We haven't gotten a market. So with that said, I got frustrated that part of the people, I don't know if they think they're low under the ground or what, but they raised their prices. And so I brought this idea to the intention coming before the council zoning and try to get a zone because I didn't know until I come to talk to Gabriel that the city took away my C2 zone and R2 zone that I thought I had. And there's piece property right now on the east end with a pending agreement on two and three quarter acres that they think they got R2 zone or C2 zone. And it's taken away when they get the comprehensive study, even though the comprehensive study called for commercial use and whatnot. I explained that to the property owners. And four of them out of the eight didn't want to get bought. They just didn't want to come do it. They didn't want to pay a hundred and sixty seven dollars for their car and the actual filing fee. So I said, I'll pay it. Let's go get our zoning. Well, I've been before that had certainly worried about they'd lose their home stand exemption. They'd be paying commercial taxes on the property. Gabriel, I said, call Gabriel. He'll explain it to me. It doesn't work that way. Hey, just go get your own commercial property. You don't have to be paying commercial taxes on the change. So no avail. I'm up here looking at my wife and myself.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to postpone this to determine why the uses that council does not want on property?
Yes, it would, but it's been suggested to me already, so. So you, make that motion. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bates to postpone the action on ordinance 2323 until our next meeting. And do I have a second? Second, Ms. Gibson, any discussion on postponement? The, by postponing it, it keeps us from voting it down, so you don't lose anything. It just gives us some time to think about it and look at what, I've got a list in front of me here of all the uses on the commercial medium and gives us a chance to go over those and see what restrictions, if any, we want to place. And so that's, you know, the proposal that's up right now. So any discussion on postponement?
Can I say something real quick?
Sorry?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Well, you know, and I'm not, I'm not real good at real property law and I don't understand zoning and everything, but it's my personal, why I'm up here, why I'm trying to get the commercial zoning is once the roundabout's done, in the next couple of weeks, 69 and Monex Road, three feet or later are going to be done and traffic's going to start increasing on Smith Valley Road. And I'd just like to be able to market my property. If I put a sign up itself in a week, then whoever buys it is going to have the hurdle of getting over. Who's going to do the roundabout? How it's going to be laid out, et cetera, et cetera. So the zoning I'm asking for is only going to, I'm going to be able to pass it on so that whoever buys it has to come in front of you to get some, am I correct?
No, you're not. No, if you get it rezoned, that zoning stays with the property and whoever buys it can put whatever they want on it that fits into the permitted uses under commercial medium. And at that point, that's where, if they want to, for example, they want to put a gas station in, they can. And so that's why we want to take our time to consider our options and what we would like to do. Like I said, I'm not opposed Like I said, I'm not opposed to rezoning this to commercial. I just want to make sure that we do it the right way, so.
Sure.
All right. Any other, any discussion on the council postponement?
Jay, can you circulate that list again to us? I know you've done it before.
I can circulate the, the list of uses and then I also heard some interest in maybe seeing how that roundabout might lay out on the property. I can see if I can find what the most current plans are for that and send that as well. I do want to clarify one thing. The zoning of the property, I know I've gotten spoken about, maybe the C2 being taken away. There have been some maps I've seen that have, have had C2 shown on it. I believe that in Greenwood's history, it's been residential. I think possibly some kind of a pass that might have been partially commercial. The power of Florida there is commercial as well. So I just want to clarify that, that the information that we're taking away is kind of a gray area.
Do we need it to think about an ad hoc committee? Because we can't do discussions with email without having an issue. Is that not right?
If, if Mr. Nelson is just distributing the information, that won't constitute.
For us to make comparisons of what we think, we would have to send it all to one person. We could do a reply all.
You're correct, you can't reply all to each other, but, I mean, you, you can. If you have questions for Gay, that, that's not gay constituted. I mean, you can't discuss them amongst yourselves. You can ask Mr. Nelson questions about.
Trying to come up with the uses that we don't want. Just two weeks isn't really a long, I'm not trying to drag it out longer than two weeks, but two weeks isn't a really long time to try and come up with those things unless we forward that to Mr. Nelson.
Forward all your questions and concerns to me and I'll try to have something compiled so we can quickly knock them out at the next council. That way you can quickly discuss it at the next meeting and you won't be a special candidate.
Thank you.
Right, any other questions or discussion on the council on postponement? And then the roll call on postponement of ordinance twenty-three, twenty-three to our next council meeting on July the seventeenth.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Penelope?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three, twenty-three is postponed on a vote of seven to one to our next meeting on July the seventeenth. First reading, ordinance twenty-three, twenty-two.
An ordinance demanding agreement fire carving narrative system to change maximum age for appointments sponsored by Campbell.
Have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion of Ms. Gibson, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Penelope. Any discussion on the council? Hearing an end roll call, ordinance twenty-three, twenty-two, first read.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Penelope?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
And Bates?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three, twenty-two is passes first reading vote of eight to zero. Resolution twenty-three oh eight.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and all fine certain real property improvements with tax amendment and setting the time and place for public hearing. They require two LLC sponsored by Campbell and Hopper. Public hearing scheduled July seventeen, twenty twenty-three, however legal would know. Because the legal found out last week that rules may or may not be suspended. We were not even able to get the notice at July seventeenth. So legal would suggest amending with all that the public hearing schedule for that date is amended in the ordinance to August seventh.
All right, do I have a motion to amend or a resolution twenty-three oh eight to change the public hearing from July seventeenth to August the eighth?
Seven.
Is that right? August seventh. Most of them is Gibson's second, most of Mr. Bates's second by Ms. Gibson, is that right?
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion on amendment to resolution twenty-three oh eight? Before, do I need a motion moment, the resolution before we amend?
Yes.
All right, let's back up a little bit. We have a motion on resolution twenty-three oh eight. Motion by Mr. Lexi, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams? All right, now we have a motion to amend by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson.
Mr. Williams.
So you did you?
Well, are you on the, the point with Mr.?
No, no, we're on the amendment now.
Oh, yes, on the amendment.
Yeah, amendment, yeah. You seconded the motion to put it on the floor. So now we have a motion to amend. Any discussion on the motion to amend resolution twenty-three oh eight? And then the roll call on the amendment to resolution twenty-three oh eight.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Penelope?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
And Betron?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three oh eight is amended on a vote of seven to one, is that correct? Right, any further discussion on resolution twenty-three oh eight as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I have some information to check for.
Yes.
Captain Sherman. Almost point C P A drivers and give me part building two LLC. And to your last meeting when we presented the building two, which is a twenty-eight thousand eight hundred square foot office building from North Emerson just in front of the, the Will store. It's on two point eight one acres, the total investment they want to buy, probably five million. But this is identical to the building just south of it and you'd asked in the introduction. If I could give you some information on the first building as far as the wages that are in that building. Because this, this building is, as I said, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred. It's, it's occupied by small businesses. In, in the current building, there's a radiology, radiology office, a urgent care facility, a banking, mortgage office. There is a vascular care group and there's also a HR. There's a total of forty-five and a half FTEs that occupy that first building. And the building, because it's spare, it is not fully occupied. The wages that, that were on the S V one for that were around three million dollars. The wages on the C F one for the building is partially occupied is two million eight hundred ninety thousand three hundred fourteen dollars. And that, like I said, there's those are smaller businesses that are in there, particularly medical, banking and HR. That comes to sixty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Excuse me, sixty-three thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars or thirty dollars, thirty, thirty dollars and a half per hour for those employees. So this building is exactly, you know, the economic development and small businesses in there that, not necessarily high FTEs, but certainly will compensate FTEs in that building. You'd asked for that information in our last meeting.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sherman? Thank you. Any further discussion on the council?
Mr. Campbell, you had said seven, seven one, I think it says.
Yeah, on the last one, there was a vote of seven to one on the amendment. I don't know if there was a name.
Well, I asked, I, did you vote yea or nay on the amendment, this veteran?
Oh, yea.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So it was eight to zero, it's got eight to seven to one. Yeah, my fault, I'm sorry. Any further discussion on resolution twenty-three oh eight as amended? Hearing an end roll call, first reading, resolution twenty-three oh eight as amended.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Penelope?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
And Campbell?
Aye. Resolution twenty-three oh eight as amended passes first reading eight to zero. Resolution twenty-three oh nine.
A resolution on the agreement common council proving an illegal agreement with Johnson County regarding federal transit administration section five fifty-three oh seven public transit grant local match contribution and related matter, matters sponsored by Gibson.
Have a motion?
Certainly.
Second?
Motion of Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on the council? Hearing an end roll call, resolution twenty-three oh nine, first reading.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Penelope?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
And Gibson?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three oh nine passes first reading eight to zero. Second reading, ordinance twenty-three sixteen.
An ordinance vacating platting, attention easement in the replat block B, Greenbrook Park sponsored by Campbell.
Have a motion? So, motion of Mr. Bates, second, Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing an end roll call, ordinance twenty-three sixteen, second reading.
Lexi?
Aye.
Penelope?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
And Hopper?
Aye.
ordinance twenty-three sixteen passes second reading eight zero. Ordinance twenty-three twenty.
An ordinance transferring funds within the general fund for legal department from budget category one-one-one, sixty-seven thousand two hundred dollars to budget category three-three-one for legal services sponsored by Gibson.
Have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion of Ms. Gibson, second?
Second?
Second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Hearing an end roll call, ordinance twenty-three twenty, second reading.
Penelope?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three twenty passes second reading eight to zero. There, nothing under new business, so moving on miscellaneous business. This is an opportunity we set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your naming address for the record. And there is a five-minute time limit per person and a twenty-minute time limit per topic.
Hi there. My name's Kimberly Ward. I live on six one six Oak Drive in Madison Court, Greenwood. On June sixth, I created a petition to allow for backyard hens in Greenwood. From there, I reached out through social media. I went to the farmer's market and distributed flyers. I did it besides, I created Fest and my next stop is Merle P. I'm just waiting for the manager to call me back. The Daily Journal posted a news article, I printed it out yesterday or today, today. Super proud of that. The thing is that people in Greenwood have these hens anyway, proposing for backyard hens. They're here anyway and what we're looking for is legality. I did reach out to Johnson County Animal Control to find out what sort of complaints were coming in in regards to chickens and they said they hadn't had complaints in a long time. I also reached out to planning and zoning and spoke with Brett Butler and he's had that position for about a year. And he said they've had less than twelve complaints regarding chickens. Mostly it's roosters. We're not proposing roosters. I'm expecting a call from a gal with Greenwood police just to see if she has any more insight on particular possible things, so. I did reach out to Marion County Animal Control because they do allow chickens. I was curious to find out what sort of complaints were coming in. And again, roosters were number one, related to noise in neighbors. I do have some ordinances that I printed off. It's, I'll pin them down to you.
Really keep one copy and give it to the court, please.
I have two. So I printed off the ordinance for Carmel. I also did for Bloomington and South Bend. I liked the way they were laid out and presented. They do, you know, propose permits to have chickens and requirements as far as cook size and distance away from neighbors, limit to how many hens you can have. The one in South Bend has an example of a permit, so I included that too. The QR code is what I've been handing out to the public and I've been getting great feedback. People are really excited about it. In less than a month, I've raised about nine hundred signatures. And through change dot org, I am able to reach out and communicate with the signers so they know what's going on and keeping them updated as far as progress. I do want to say that the people in this community, they long to be closer to their food source, be more self-sustaining, you know, a lot has changed. And we have real concerns about food supply, inflation and the quality of our food. I love Greenwood and I'm proud to represent this community. I'm going to continue to reach out. I have a Facebook page hoping to form a little community. I want to be Kelly, my friend and Realtor. I just got a cute little house in Old Town Greenwood. I'm going to grow a lot of cash out of it and it's going to be a beautiful addition to Old Town Greenwood. I appreciate it. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you.
My name is Violet and I live in Indianapolis. I would like to say some things about chickens. I know some of you are against chickens, but I would like to prove that wrong. At my house, we have eleven chickens, Creamer Black Fluffy, Daisy Lou, Shiner, Smokey, Tiger Lily, Goldie, Cinnamon, Ludo, Honey and Poppy. Each one has a different personality. I know that all my chickens know me and love me and I love them so much. Chickens work so hard to lay egg every day and we should respect them for what they do for us. I really hope Greenwood will have the right to own chickens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else listening to address the council?
My name is Ellen Hurd. I live at six one six Oak Drive, Greenwood. I had just met Kimberly about a week ago maybe. Back in twenty twenty-one, I had actually sent off a email to each board member which I know some of you probably didn't get it, which we're there. But I was just trying to get chickens introduced at that time and I kind of really didn't know how to go about it, so I contacted my councilman and got a little bit of feedback from him as to what we needed to do. So it was a petition and luckily Kimberly had already started that. We had gotten different, I guess what I want to say is there are chickens in the neighborhoods. And I don't know if you know that, but there are. And I actually work from home and there's chickens very close to me and they don't bother me one bit. And they have a rooster and this rooster crows three times, I think, a day and that's it. They aren't any nuisance, they're not a smell, they're not anything to get upset about. There's a lot of misconceptions with chickens and a lot of times it's just non-education pretty much. There, back in nineteen eighteen, no, yes, nineteen eighteen, Uncle Sam put out a poster. They're back in nineteen eighteen, no, yes, nineteen eighteen, Uncle Sam put out a poster saying that they needed to combat food supply and everything was to have two chickens, two hens per person in the household. This is, it's not made up. I also have a letter here that I would, let's see, to let you know that some of the surrounding towns, which I think Kimberly mentioned too, was. South Bend, Portage, Shelbyville, even Bloomington, Bargersville, Carmel, Bloomington, there's, and I think New Whiteland has started as well. There's a lot of states in across the United States and we've got a lot of people that are moving from other states who can have them. They go to rural P or they go to truck supply who sells them in our county. And they go and spend fifteen hundred dollars, whatever they want on a chicken coop. And, you know, and money to take care of these chickens because they want the pets, they want to teach their children, you know, how to handle and take care of animals the proper way versus harming anything. And, you know, we just can't, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, but, let's see. So anyway, it's going on, again, like Kimberly said, I personally am, have always been a love, I insist and would be too to do so, and I want the opportunity to have chickens. I'm approaching sixty and it's on my bucket list, I want to have them. And I actually have, and you can ask my husband, I've actually talked about moving out of Greenwood, which I've lived here twenty two years. Just so that I can have chickens and experience that, my mother, my grandmother, my aunts, uncles, they all had them. And, you know, I can tell you stories, you know. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that I like to go around and fill blessing boxes that are around to help vulnerable citizens in Greenwood. And I would like to be able, even with these blessing boxes, to maybe put a little note, if, you know, I have eggs, contact me and I can get them some free eggs. I mean, we've got a lot of vulnerable citizens with the economy and everything happening right now that need us. And I think that that would be a great community thing to do. They're not that hard, a lot of, here's another. Let's see, there's, should backyard chickens be legal? They have nuisance concerns, they have noise and odor, or with the odor, a forty pound dog generates more waste than ten chickens. Hens are no louder than humans or even quieter than dogs.
Maybe have, if one did it.
Okay, let's see, chickens attack predators, they, they, the only predators around there are out there to everybody's sharks at night when they come out. When they coop, you secure them very well, they actually eat ticks, they eat bugs, they can kill a snake, they'll eat a rat or a mouse. Let's see, humans are at a minimal risk for getting sick from anything backyard chickens and, let's see. Remember that, but there's, there's some things that we just want you to consider and I know it's. A lot are probably one of your work, like Ken said, there is a permit, you don't have to do that, I think Indianapolis ended up doing a permit and then they finally just let it go. Indianapolis can have chick, twelve chickens and one rooster. And so it's just a matter of what our board.
I'm sorry, at times. Anyone else wishing to address the council this time?
I'm from Indianapolis, I am a small chicken farmer and I love chickens so much. I think they are so cute, they help us and other people around us too. But they stay like are very healthy and pretty. I feel a little bit too, you know, and love chickens too, thank you for your talk.
Thank you, young man. Anyone else at this time?
Hi, I'm Hanson Ray, with the four thirty three Beach Park Drive for twenty nine years. And I had no idea there were so many chickens, I've never seen one, and I just found out about this yesterday. I think it's a fantastic idea, I don't know why we can't have chickens, my sister and I have been talking about that for years. And honestly, I'm probably going to get married into this year, beginning of next year, and I've always said I want, I don't want. But when I grew up, we had a little garden, and that sort of thing. And I want my kids to be able to have that responsibility to produce some of their food, have a garden, have some chickens. It's not about, you know, having a whole farm or livestock, that sort of thing, but having, yeah, ten, fifteen chickens, that's not giving anybody any harm. And gosh, the price of eggs and how things are going back this year. Really, it's, I think it's silly if we're not able to do that. I think there's a lot of great arguments for it, I think it's been done successfully elsewhere nearby. The only place I've ever noticed chickens in the backyard was, you go up on the north side, like the Longmont Trail or, there's some trails up there. Where you can see people's backyards and have chickens in their, their beautiful backyards setups, but, I mean, it's not anything, if you work in their backyard, literally a lot, I have to say. See if there's anything else I want to say. It's great for the community, I mean, basically we're saying, you know, we'll have eggs, share with the neighbors. And I think they eat rodents and pests. And, yeah, the fact that we can have so many dogs and cats and all these other things, not chickens, it just seems, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Jessica Maw, I'm the sister, I've lived in Greenwood for thirty six years.
Did you state your name and address?
Yeah. Do you want me to repeat? Jessica, I'm a girl, four thirty three Beach Park Drive.
Thank you.
And I have, I have kids, we have a garden, we try and grow it bigger every year and honestly, we buy chicken food for our garden. So it would really be, you know, cost savings and it's convenience factor for us to have our own chickens. I had contacted whoever it is with the city that manages those things, I talked to them, and there is actually a way that you can have chickens. But you have to go through a permit process and quite, you know, it's a lengthy thing, I just kind of looked at that in the past year. And I was like, okay, well, I'm a single mom, I have two kids, and I'm, where am I going to find the time, it's kind of like the people with their zoning, they're like, I don't know, that's a lot. So when I saw the petition come through, I was so excited because I have, I'm talking about chickens and honestly considering moving out of Greenwood just to have that opportunity, which sounds silly, but, you know, I love Greenwood and I love being here, but. I want my kids to know that responsibility and to, you know, have farm fresh eggs and to have that food security, you know.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, James C N F two six five one, pleasure for your time in Greenwood, Indiana. Thank you for your time tonight, I appreciate it, I'm also here to support chickens as well as hopefully get it on the agenda for a future reading. I believe that chickens, there's a lot of reasons for them, food security, salary, taxes, a lot, but really what I want to focus on tonight is community part of chickens and my personal experience with them. Besides growing them or besides raising them up in northern Indiana, I also had the opportunity to work with kids with autism, I'm a behavior therapist. And I worked in Indianapolis and in the neighborhood, there were several chickens being raised, and we had the opportunity to take those kids and learn about the process of chickens, and it was quite therapeutic for those kids. So I believe this is good for the community as well as for food security, and I would encourage you guys to look at this and put it out on the agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council concerning this topic or any other topic? All right. Moving on then, miscellaneous business from the council. We do have one issue regards to a tax abatement. Negistics or Brittany Bose has a ten year tax abatement. And their last CF one they turned in looked kind of nice, however. They're, just, I think this last week, they laid off all of their employees, three hundred and eleven employees. So we would like to start the process of terminating their tax abatement. To do that, I need a motion and a vote from the council to, for me to be able to sign a letter to them to start the process of terminating their tax abatement. I believe they laid off all of their employees, so, at least all of them here in Greenwood, so. Mr. Williams makes the motion, Spectrum seconds that, any discussion? All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed, passes unanimously. Any other business from the council? Yep. Can we have to do a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, all right, roll call on a motion to allow me to sign the letter to start the termination process of property tax abatement for Negistics.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hopper.
Enthusiastic aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, all right, any other business in the council, miscellaneous business? All right, corporation counsel?
All right, that's the corporation counsel.
Controller?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
Nothing.
We are adjourned, thank you.